Today is Thursday, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We are meeting here at one four zero five zero Olympic Drive in Clear Lake, California. It is six P. M., and I am calling our meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Sloton?
Here.
Councilmember Kramer? Vice Mayor Claffey?
Yep.
Mayor? And Councilmember Overton is absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Flora, any changes to the agenda? Oh, I apologize. Let's have a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Kramer, would you offer that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Councilmember Sloton?
A moment of silence. My neighbor was just transported to the hospital. She's been in and out at some time, and I pray for her that she will make it through this time again. So a moment of silence, please.
Thank you all. All right. Mr. Flora, any changes to the agenda?
No modifications, Mr. Mayor.
Can I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
A motion by Councilmember Kramer and a second by Councilmember Sloton. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye and submit your electronic vote.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council and Councilmember Overton absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This evening, we have several presentations. I'd like to invite our Chief of Police to bring his team up for the May's Adoptable Dogs. I believe that would probably be Lieutenant Peterson. Good evening and welcome.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. So this month, we have brought Roman. He is a five-year-old Border Collie German Shepherd mix. He's very, a very distinguished gentleman, and he's, wants all the love that he can get. He's great on leash, and he enjoys his long walks. He is a volunteer favorite. He's very well-mannered and polite. He knows a couple commands, like sit and stay. He has done well with other dogs at the shelter. We are unsure of cats, though. He is neutered and up to date on all vaccinations. We have many dogs just like Roman, so if anybody is interested, please come on down to the shelter. We could use everybody's help in getting the dogs out.
Thank you very much. Well, as I said, we have plenty of dogs available for adoption. Anyone interested can contact the Animal Control. And Lieutenant Peterson, do you have any additional report or information to provide? It's been a minute, I think, since that's been offered. Sorry, sir, to put you on the spot.
No, it's fine. So I know that everybody's waiting for a report to be done. The final draft is being finalized right now. So that should be presented before the next city council.
Wonderful. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Yeah, the investigation is concluded. Obviously, investigations' time is based on the investigation, not the time that I can make up. So currently, there's intake of animals to year to date is ninety-seven dogs have come into the shelter over the past year. Eighty-one have left the shelter. That includes thirty rescues, thirty-four returned to owners, seventeen adoptions, one euthanasia, and one died in, at the shelter. Live release rate at this point is ninety-nine point fifty-eight percent. One thing that we are able to add be through the investigation. I know veterinary care was a concern. Speaking to North Bay Animal Services and the Clear Lake Animal Clinic, they, to date, from January one to now, have spent twenty thousand, twenty thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-six cents, and that is confirmed with the clinic. That is what I have for now.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your time. All right, moving on from May's Adoptable Dogs, we'll have a presentation by N C E on our pavement management plan. Mr. Flora?
Yes, we will just turn the floor over to Deverati from N C E.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's a bit muffled, but... Is there anyone else from N C E that's joining you for the presentation that we need to promote?
No, I think it's just me who will be presenting.
Okay, well, the floor is yours. You should be able to share your screen.
Okay. Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Today, I'm here on behalf of N C E to present the update on Clear Lake pavement management program that we currently updated over last one year. So to kind of get started with the presentation, I'd like to brief a little bit about what is a pavement management program. Our pavement management program is basically designed to provide objective information so that managers can make more consistent, cost-effective, and defensible decisions related to pavement management. So it helps basically answering four questions. What streets does the city own or maintain? What condition they're in? And what the repairs are needed and when? And how much funding is needed to maintain or improve the streets? So PMPs are often, this kind of answer is provided by some decision support software, and for this one, we have used StreetSaver. Under this scope, we had several tasks that we completed. Number one was to update the street inventory. We worked with the city to understand if they have paved any further gravelly streets or not so that we can change that in the, in the database, and it is, it will be considered as a paved road. We can, we performed pavement condition surveys. So we had our technician went out there, and then they rated the full entire network using a walking survey and using M T C, the A S T M standard, a distress protocol. Next, we worked with the city to understand what treatments has been done since the last update. So the last time we updated city's pavement management program was in two thousand eighteen. So we made sure that between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-two, all the treatments you have performed on your network has been recorded correctly in the database. Next, we, we had a meeting with the city to understand the treatment strategy, and it was the treatment strategy, and then we reviewed your recent B-taps. So what it does, it helps us to update the treatment strategy and unit cost in the decision tree, which is one of the most vital element for the budget analysis because it includes all the costs and all the treatment types that's needed for pavement in different condition categories. Next, we fix some G I S mapping in the database, and then we perform budget need analysis. This means that we let the StreetSaver decide based on all the elements that we put as an input, all the distress data, all the B-taps, unit costs from the B-taps on all the M and R history. The StreetSaver gave us a number during the analysis, showing how much actually needed for your pavement to bring it to a condition where you can maintain without any kind of rigorous rehabilitation. Next, we did perform some budget scenarios. That means that we performed, we gave the city's existing budget, and we got the results in terms of that, what would be the projected P C I in ten years. And we also performed other budget scenarios, like what it would take to improve the city's P C I to a certain number. And then finally, we made, prepared a draft report, and then we distributed it to you, and we got some comments from the city, and then we incorporated it, and finally, we submitted a final report. And then last, we actually conducted a StreetSaver training to help understand the very basics of the StreetSaver features so that the city staff can conduct very minor tasks, like updating inventory and then updating M and R history in the database, all those, all those small tasks that can be managed on your end, and you don't have to hire a consultant for that. So we had the training as well on the StreetSaver. So basically, this project, under this project, we actually did all these tasks for all the agencies under Lake A P C, that's State County, Lakeport, and Clear Lake. So we can see that for the Lakeport County and Clear Lake, Clear Lake has a total of eighty-five point two central line miles. Lakeport had twenty-nine point seven, and Lake County has approximately five hundred central line miles. So the asset value, the asset value means that if you had to replace your entire network from scratch, what's the dollar value for that? So the asset value for Clear Lake is fifty-two point seven million dollars. The total asset value for Lake A P C is point five billion dollars. But in today's presentation, we're gonna only focus on the Clear Lake. So we all know about the, kind of the pavement condition, pavement condition category. So what is that? Pavement condition is typically quantified using pavement condition index, which is called P C I. So this ranges between zero to hundred, hundred being the best and zero being the worst. And this scale is divided into four general categories. So good, which is the P C I from seventy to hundred, fair, we say from fifty to seventy, poor, twenty-five to fifty, and below twenty-five, it's considered failed. So as you can see from the, some typical pictures, that basically the good, good pavement is when you pave it, and then it's approx, it's kind of a brand-new pavement and probably a little bit minor cracks on it. For the fair category, you would see some cracks, and probably you have to use the crack sealing to do fix those cracks. For the poor condition, you will see a lot of cracking basically along the wheel path. You'd see some rotting, and you will experience that while you're riding on it because the right, the right quality would be rough. And finally, in the failed condition category, you'd see this street started to crumble and broke down into pieces. There is all this cracking, which is known as alligator cracking, and then the right quality would be really poor. So when we looked at the P C I, we saw that the Clear Lake has a P C I of fifty-one, which falls kind of the borderline of poor and fair condition category, a little bit above poor condition. The countywide P C I is thirty-seven. So Clear Lake definitely has a really good P C I in terms of the countywide P C I. So now the good part. So we have seen, this is showing the historical P C I over last, last decade. So all these dogs from two thousand five, two thousand seven, all these are inspected P C I. So as you can see, a huge jump between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-two, when we last conducted this inspection last year. This is like eleven points jump between four to five years, which is not very usual. But we have seen the reason behind it because we all know that in two thousand sixteen, Major V was passed by Clear Lake voters, and then it started beginning some money, approximately two million dollars. And then when we worked with the city to understand that what type of treatment has been done over past years, we saw that city has conducted rehabilitation of approximately eleven central line miles and paved over twenty central line miles of gravelly street. So when you pave a gravelly street, it is considered in the network, and then the P C I is actually calculated. But if you have just a gravelly street, it's not being calculated in your P C I or your inventory. So that's actually helped the city have this huge jump from two thousand eighteen update to two thousand twenty-two update, this from forty to fifty-one. But it's very important to mention that, mention that the, since this is a gravel road and that it was, it has been paved with chip seal, so the deterioration would be faster compared to asphalt concrete street. So if you have a pavement which is an asphalt concrete over aggregate base versus chip seal over gravel, of course, it's showing better right quality, and it is having a better P C I compared to zero, but it will deteriorate faster, so you have to make sure that you maintain it regularly. So having said that, if we look at the breakdown of the function class, that arturials, collectors, and residential, so you can see that your arturials and collectors are in fair condition, your residential's are in poor condition with a P C I of forty-six. So probably, next, in next programs, you probably wanna focus on your residential so that it can be, it can be brought up to like a blue area. So it's can be like a fair or good condition. Also, just a P C I number doesn't always tell you the whole story. If you look at the condition category breakdown, it shows you that not a little bit, a little less than half of your network is in good condition categories. It's almost there. Thirty-two point three percent is in, is fair, poor condition category. So your target should be to reduce the red area and increase the green area. So this is kind of a pie chart that's showing your condition percent network in different condition category. So the green is good, blue is fair, yellow is poor, and red is the worst, like the failed condition. So now that we've kind of talked about the overall condition, let's look at what are the typical treatment strategies for the city is. So we are all familiar with this pavement deterioration curve, and we know that being proactive is always less expensive than reactive. So the proactive treatment is performed to preserve the pavements in good condition, which costs less. Basically, if your street's in kind of in green zone and you keep maintaining it, you will have to spend less money. Rather, if you wait and then you fall into the blue, yellow, or red zone, then you have to spend a lot more money to do a costly rehabilitation of the failed street. So when we work with the city, we develop this decision tree where you can see that in good condition category, the city is using micro-surfacing or chip seal, and the fair condition is micro-surfacing chip seal, and H M A overlay is basically for major streets. And then for poor condition, it's Milan overlay, and for the failed condition, it's F D R with H M A overlay. So how have the maintenance cost has changed since two thousand eighteen? And then we had the pandemic in between, right? So the cost has increased a lot statewide. So we have seen, the orange bar is showing two thousand eighteen cost, and then the blue bar is showing two thousand twenty-two cost, which we have used for this update. And we have seen that the overall maintenance costs have increased by more than thirty percent. So it's hard to do the same amount of treatment with limited amount of budget, but still, it needs to be kind of, make sure that the money is being spent in a more efficient way. So now let's look at needs versus available funding. So when I talk about the needs, this is an analysis period we did was for ten years. So the ten-year need for your network came to be about twenty-five point eight million dollars. The budget we used for the analysis, the available budget from the city we got for ten years was twenty-two million dollars. That means two point two million dollars in average per year. So based on that, you can see that you actually have a good amount of available budget. Only fifteen percent is the remaining need that needs to be met. Otherwise, it's a really, really good case on your, on your end to just have eighty-five percent need made by your available funding, and this is not a very usual scenario that we always see for other agencies. So when we ran the scenario with your available budget and some of your scheduled projects, we saw that your P C I will actually increase over the ten years, and, and it will kind of be maintained at around sixty. And your deferred maintenance will be lower a little bit as well. So deferred maintenance means that the remaining, deferred maintenance means is the remaining, remaining treatment that's not being done because of the limited funding. So that's the undone work is known as the deferred maintenance. So as you can see, that your current budget is having, is increasing your P C I to sixty in ten points over ten years. If you look at the condition category, you can see that your, will have a little bit over half of your network in good condition, which is really great. And your red zone is shrink, shrinking. That means it will drop to twenty-one point seven percent from thirty-two point three percent, which is really great. So this is a really promising story to have this funding, to see this kind of improvement for your network. So I would like to show kind of a comparison among this Lake A P C agencies. So as you can see, we saw, we told you that the Clear Lake has a total budget of twenty-two million dollars, which is two point two million dollars per year. Lakeport budget is two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars only. So to kind of compare it to apples and to apples to apples, the Y-axis is actually telling you available budget per central line miles. As you can see, that Clear Lake definitely has a lot of money compared to Lakeport and the county, which is kind of triple or double. So what's the impact? As you can see, the two thousand eighteen P C I for Clear Lake was forty, and then it jumped to fifty-one in two thousand twenty-two, and then the projected P C I is sixty. That means if you keep bringing in this, the amount of money we actually ran the scenarios for, then you will expect to see this jump, high jump over ten years. On the other hand, the Lakeport and Lake County is kind of struggling, will be struggling with their money so that their P C I doesn't fall into poor condition category. And this is kind of a comparison of the current network condition that's showing where Clear Lake stands. Definitely, Clear Lake has a lot more network in good condition category, whereas nearly kind of half of the network for Lake County and Lakeport is in either poor or failed condition categories. So Clear Lake is having better network condition in terms of when you compare to other Lake A P C agencies. So with that, this is my last slide, and the conclusion slide is showing that Clear Lake has a substantial investment in pavement network, which is fifty-two point seven million dollars. The network is in fair condition with a P C I of fifty-one. Treatment unit cost has increased more than thirty percent. Ten-year funding needs is twenty-five point eight million dollars. Given that the city has twenty-two million dollars over ten years, the ten-year funding deficit is three point eight million dollars. Impact of existing annual budget is that P C I will increase to sixty in ten years. Deferred maintenance will decrease, and more than fifty percent of the network will be in good condition in ten years. So with that, I will keep up this conclusion slide, and that's the end of my presentation. And I will welcome any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. We do have a couple of questions. First would be from Councilmember Kramer.
Yes. When did you do the survey that you developed these numbers from? What, what month of, I assume it was in two thousand twenty-two?
It's two thousand twenty-two June, around June or July.
June or July. Okay, so all of the work that was done last year on the roads does not, is not reflected in this. Is that correct?
Oh, no, it is reflected. So how it's reflected is basically, we actually got the list of the streets that you, you worked on in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, known as a schedule project, and then StreetSaver takes into those streets will be done, and then that reflects in the projected P C I. So the P C I I have shown over the ten years in two thousand twenty-three includes the work that's been done in two thousand twenty-two.
So the, so the P C I of fifty-one includes the work that was done this past summer?
The P C I includes the fifty-one is, includes the past summer.
Which was, what, ten miles paving?
Eight miles on Lake Shore.
Eight miles. So that's included in that?
Yes.
That, that wasn't my understanding when I was at the A P C meeting, but thanks for correcting that.
Yes.
Any other questions? Councilmember Sloton?
Any, is inflation and increasing cost of the materials and stuff included in it? Did you, or did you make an assumption on that?
So the inflation rate of four percent was included in the analysis.
Okay. But not, that doesn't reflect any possible increases in materials and labor more than inflation?
No, it's just a flat rate, inflation rate of four percent along ten years.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Claffey?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. It's, it's, I guess disappointing to see we have such a concerted effort in this, but even with our budget, we're, we're still not gonna quite hit our need. It's just some of the struggles that we have to deal with. What I loved seeing was the jump over the next couple of years. So maybe this is directed to our Public Works Director. How many miles do we think we'll be able to pave or resurface to get up to that sixty-one? Oh, sorry, put you on the spot.
I believe we have about, just in next year alone, at least fifteen more miles we're going to do, maybe close to twenty, so that, that alone with the next three, four projects will take us a lot higher. I don't, I don't know about the sixty-one jump, but...
Fantastic with the size of your team to, to get all that done for our city. So thank you, and thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out one thing. I mean, I do, I do think that, you know, they're basing the future budget on the Measure V revenues that we're expecting. So, you know, there's a few things that we've done differently. The debt financing that we did is gonna allow us to, you know, do a larger group of projects cheaper, we expect, and sooner than would be normal. And then, of course, this doesn't include, you know, grant funding either, which, you know what? I don't know, we brought in over the last three years another twenty million or something. And so, you know, I think if anything, the, the revenue projections in our case, while they look, you know, much better than what you see in a lot of jurisdictions, are probably a little conservative, so...
Thank you, Mr. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Sloton. Thank you, Mr. Mr. City Manager. Mr. Sloten, you have another follow-up question?
Yeah, actually more of a comment. You know, what I wonder what it would have looked like if we didn't have Measure V. Think about that. And I just want to make also the comment that since we're now what they call a self-help agency, that we are more likely to get grants from the state and the federal government. So we're trying to do our best here to get the streets up to speed, so thank you. Thank you for voting that in.
We just received another five hundred thousand today because of that. But, you know, I do want to, it is very exciting. I'm very proud of all the work that's been done over the last few years. And it's it's somewhat rare to see that much optimism in your road conditions. And, you know, that certainly hasn't been the story in Clear Lake over the years. But, you know, you're already seeing a difference, and we're in a position because of Measure V to to definitely change that story. But just reminding the council that we also still have a lot of private roads in the city, which we take no responsibility for. And so, you know, those will have to be factored in at some point. And the hope is that when we get more of a handle on the public roads, that there is a point where, you know, we could work with the private property owners and accept those into the system and improve those as well.
Thank you, Mr. Flora. Well, everybody covered the points I wanted to make, but I do want to, I would like to just at this moment, thank the members of the Ad Hoc Committee those years ago when we sat in this room and discussed what it would take to get a measure passed, since we had tried three times prior and it had failed. And again, I want to thank all those nameless folks who answered the survey that we set out, that we crafted the measure on. It was truly a community grassroots effort to get Measure V passed. And now we're seeing the rewards of that, even in today's economy, where unfortunately we do have some some cost increases. But I think city staff has a handle on that. Eddie, I'm going to put you on the spot one more time, but it's because it's a question I think a lot of us get asked. And this summer coming up, I know you've got some big projects. Without getting specific on which streets and where, but if you just give a general idea, I believe in the Park Woods subdivision, you're looking at doing some work there. And could you just kind of give a high-level overview of where we're going to be working this summer?
This summer, right now, we're grading in anticipation for chips hill in the avenues, some over, I want to say off of Old Highway fifty-three, between the highway and State Highway and Old Highway fifty-three. And we're going to be doing some out near Pomos School. We have some, the Clear Lake Park area, we're in design now. Ballpark and south of Ballpark, we're in design for a pavement next year as well, as well as the tree streets.
Wonderful. Thank you, Eddie.
But just to make sure you caught that, because you were talking about this year's project, those three big areas aren't, they're in design now, they'll be in construction next year. That's what Eddie said, but I just wanted to make sure.
Well, but that also, I was going to make a follow-up comment, which is we do have a pavement plan. If you're interested about what street, you know, the street you live on and when that is coming up for resurfacing, you can contact the staff and they'll do the best to answer your question. Also, if you think you live on a private street, you need to get that identified because we can't spend taxpayer money on private roads. That would be a misuse of taxpayer money.
And not to forget, Arrowhead and Burns Valley will also be redone, Burns Valley Road next year. And and soon we're in design also on Lake Shore Drive, as you know, from here all the way.
So there's a lot of projects in the works. It can get kind of confusing because there is so much work. But again, kudos to city staff for the great work they're doing to improve our roadways in the city limits. Very good. Any other comments before I move on to the next item? All right, well, I have a couple of presentations and proclamations to make, so I'll step down to the podium for that. Would you like to join me up here? Thank you.
Christine, you should come up too.
I was going to say, who else is here to talk? And and thank you very much. Please come up here. I like to stand here so then people in PEG TV land can see us as well as if, these guys, they know what's going on. They don't need to see us. All right, so let me read this, and then I give you opportunity if you'd like to share your thoughts and some information. Whereas tourism plays a critical role in Lake County and the state's economic prosperity. And whereas a robust travel industry provides significant economic benefits for the entire state, generating more than one million thirty-four, I'm sorry, one hundred and thirty-four point seven billion dollars in visitor spending in twenty twenty-two. And whereas travel has been the foundation of healthy workforce, serving as one of the largest private sector employers in California, supporting one point one million jobs in twenty twenty-two. Whereas spending by travelers benefits state and local governments alike, generating eleven point nine billion dollars in tax revenue in twenty twenty-two to support essential public services and programs that benefit all Californians. And whereas Lake County tourism generated one hundred and seventy-five point eight million dollars in visitor spending and thirteen point one million dollars in state and local tax revenue and eighteen hundred jobs in twenty twenty-two. Now, whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic devastated every sector of the travel industry with staggering economic impacts, affecting every community in California, including Lake County. And whereas California's tourism industry's resiliency has brought the economic impact of travel more than ninety percent back to pre-pandemic levels in twenty twenty-two. Whereas the rebound of travel will continue to drive the rebuilding of California's economy and workforce. And whereas the California Legislature in twenty sixteen declared every May as California Tourism Month to celebrate the positive impacts of tourism in California. And whereas Californians can help put their fellow Californians back to work and support the recovery of local businesses by traveling in California. Therefore, the City Council, the City of Clear Lake, does hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-three as Tourism Month in Clear Lake, and we urge all residents of Clear Lake to join in us in recognizing the critical role this industry plays in Clear Lake. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, as we know, the lake is full, so we're all looking forward to a really busy tourist season. We've got two new lodging destinations coming on board, Canuckti Harbor and Hotopia down at the Six Sigma property. And all of our visitor maps will be out and distributed by Memorial Day so that everyone coming to the county will know where to go. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
I'm Kristy White. I'm the chairperson of the Lake County Tourism Improvement Board. So thanks.
Hi, I'm Colleen Lee. I'm a certified tourism ambassador. We are a volunteer organization that is with the Lake County Chamber. I will tell you, though, I have been a loyal patron here of the Clear Lake Chamber. And I can tell you that when people come up here, they're excited, talking about roads. Boy, they're saying that it's changed so much. So I just want to let you know that we're available and we're going to have classes. So if you're interested in becoming an ambassador, please get in touch with us, either chamber. We'll be happy to help you. And all we are are cheerleaders for the Clear Lake area. Thank you.
Can you open it up? I've got questions now. Come on, come back, come back. So why would a business owner want to have their employees get certified with CTA?
Oh, certification. It's for our class. We go over the different destinations in the county. We let you know what is going on in the county. So we kind of get into a lot of customer service as well. So when somebody walks into a business, you're not merely saying, hi, how are you? You know, glad you're here. You're asking what you want to do, where do you want to go? What is, you know, your special reason why you're here? So hopefully, we can show you guys how to interject with all the customers, all the visitors. It's a lot of fun, and I can tell you, this one over here, Karen, I just found out has been a longtime resident. I just found this out when I was working at Ripe Choice in doing one of these events. So you meet a lot of people, hear their backgrounds, and it's just a lot of fun.
Thank you. Thank you. Just a follow-up comment. Been here a long time, born and raised in Lake County and lived in Clear Lake. And I can't tell you how frustrating it is when I hear an employee of a business complaining about the city or complaining about the area, complaining about the lake. And I don't know that they understand that they're hurting their business, their boss, as well as the people that are here. And most of the time, the information that they're sharing in their complaints isn't accurate. So help your employees learn the facts. If you don't know the facts about Lake County and the great things that are happening here, I'd like you to introduce yourself to one of these fine ladies here. So thank you. Thanks for being up here. Next, I'd like to invite our friends from the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary to come up, join me. You guys look sharp. Thank you for being here tonight. We'll get some pictures for you. Commander, he's really good at taking pictures. He's really good at taking pictures. We can do that. Thank you all very much for being here. This is one that's very near and dear to me, and I can explain why after I make this presentation. This week is National Safe Boating Week. And it reads, whereas National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to the important lifesaving information for recreational boaters so that they can have a safer, more enjoyable experience out on the water throughout the year. And whereas in the calendar year of twenty twenty-one, the U.S. Coast Guard statistics revealed that recreational boating fatalities decreased by fourteen percent from the previous year. Of the six hundred and fifty-eight people who died in fatal boating-related accidents in the United States, four hundred and eighty-nine of those fatalities were due to drowning, and three hundred and ninety-nine of those boaters would be alive today had they been wearing a life jacket. The Lake County Flotilla has continued to provide free life jackets to young people by participating in community activities which promote child safety and educating the boating public on safe boating practices. And whereas Flotilla zero eight dash zero eight of Lake County will continue its efforts to educate the boating public by resuming safety patrols, free vessel safety checks, and encourage the public to practice safe boating habits and to wear your life jackets. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council, the City of Clear Lake, does hereby designate the week of May twentieth through May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, as National Safe Boating Week in Clear Lake, and urges the users of Clear Lake, Lake Pillsbury, Blue Lakes, and Indian Valley Reservoir to safeguard their lives by wearing life jackets when boating and exercising safe boating practices. And boat responsibly and wear your life jacket, presented this day by the City Council, the City of Clear Lake. Thank you.
I'm Dorothy DeGolfe. I'm the Public Affairs Officer for the Flotilla. And I just want to comment on our life jacket giveaway, which will be May twentieth, this Saturday, at the Library Park in Lakeport. The gazebo will be giving away life jackets to young children. I just wanted to let you know. Also, I'd like to introduce, this is Gary Jolly. He is our finance officer and also also our navigation officer. And this is our Flotilla Commander, Kevin Keely. And they would like to say something to you.
Yes, the Coast Guard Auxiliary, there's around thirty thousand auxiliars nationwide. We are the civilian arm of the United States Coast Guard. We are under the Department of Homeland Security. We, our whole mission, as was described in the proclamation, is to provide boating safety on the nation's waterways. Here in Lake County, our life jacket program has been a real big part of our flotilla activity. We also try to get out on the lake and do our patrols to help people that are in need when we find them and when we are called to assist the Sheriff's Department in any search and rescue situation that we might have on the lake. Fortunately, we haven't had a lot of those in the last few years. Also, what we do, we help leak bed management. We work with them as far as dealing with the navigational lights and buoys that are around the lake. So that's primarily our our mission that we have. One other item that we have, our flotilla commander, it's Kevin, it's his project, and it's really an interesting one that we started the last year, and we are going to promote it. Kevin, would you like to give a little shot on what that's all about?
You know, one little project we got coming up this month, it'll be on the thirty-first of May. We call it the Mirror Project. It's the same thing that Mary Downing used to do on Mount Canuckti to let her sister know that she was okay every day at two o'clock. This is like over a hundred years ago. So what we do is we do that same project with the kids at Pomos, Burns Valley, in the Creativity School in Clear Lake. And so what we do is we have Gary and some other auxiliars at the schools, and they'll show these kids how to use their mirrors, how to signal mirrors. And then when I see them signaling, I will signal them back. And the kids really have a great time doing that. I'll be, yeah, I'll be on Wright's Peak on top of Mount Canuckti. I remember the first year we did it, I have this huge mirror up there. And I have my little phone on, you know, so I can listen to the kids and kind of hear what's going on. And I remember we flashed them, and they all started screaming. And the auxiliary next to me, she says, I think we just melted the children. Probably all in the name of science. So, but anyway, it's going to be great fun. It's going to be on the thirty-first, and we're going to be looking for anybody all around Lake County to see if they want to participate. So if you want to see if you can signal us, signal us, we're going to try and signal you back as well. And aside from being the commanding officer, I'm a mail carrier in Clear Lake. And I got to tell you, we really appreciate.
Okay, I got a couple of questions, though. Okay, don't you have an event coming up, a life jacket giveaway, I believe, here in the near future? Anything down at this end planned, Commander?
We did one a couple of weeks ago during the children's year.
And how did that go?
Oh, it went great.
There you go. So, thank you. And did you get pictures?
Lots.
Good. All right. Questions for our Coast Guard?
Yeah, I have been up here for fifty years.
Yeah, come up to the mic so the people in PEG TV can hear you.
My question is, and I've been hearing on TV due to these rains and the fast rivers, do we have to have life jackets on? I entertain my grandkids now and stuff like that. I have deck boats, I have hot rod boats, and I like to go fast on the lake. I do use my life jackets during those times, but during the deck boat times, when we're just out for cruising the lake, do we still need to, is it a requirement to put on lifeguard jackets?
Technically, all children twelve and under, I believe is the year, are required to have a life jacket on.
At all times.
While you are underway on any waterway, wherever it may be.
And how about the adults?
The adults, that's up to you. If if you feel that what you're doing, it's, you're okay without wearing a life jacket, that's your prerogative. It's always a good idea. Our motto is, if you got it, wear it.
Well, yeah, well, that's what's been on TV, so I know it's coming up to be.
For sure, for sure.
Any other questions? Thank you all so much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You got to take care of it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Maybe someday, Kevin, you can come back and tell us about Mount Canokti.
Thanks, Ellen. All right. Moving on to Item F of our agenda, Public Comment. Public Comment is a time for the members of our public to stand and address us here at the podium. There will be a three-minute time limit. And please remember, we cannot respond to any item that is not on the agenda. If you're going to comment about something on the agenda, we ask you to hold that comment until that agenda item is called. City Council members are required to follow the Brown Act. And being subject of the Brown Act, we cannot respond to your questions. We can only, hopefully, if available, direct you to a member of our staff, whether it's the Police Department, our City Manager, or Public Works Director, for example, if your item involves them. So at this point, I do have one request by Jean Yednich to speak to us about police code enforcement and animal control.
Good afternoon. My name is Jean Yednich. I was here two weeks ago regarding the transients outside my property at 1511533rd Avenue. After the meeting, I was assured the problem would be taken care of by Chief Hobbs. On Monday, I went to my property. The transients were still there with their tarps attached to my fence, as well as two emaciated dogs. There was a large amount of trash. I went to the Police Department on that day to complain again and was told that code enforcement was having a meeting on Tuesday. And I was promised a call back from Lee Lambert by the end of the day. As usual, no phone call. On Saturday morning, I went back to my property, and I got in the face of the transients and ordered them to remove themselves and their personal property, including the dogs, from my fence. I put myself in jeopardy as the neighbors cheered my efforts. Barbara and I are 70 years old, and Lorenzo. We loaded two trucks, loads full of urine and feces-soaked mattresses, bedding, broken glass, and trash from the city road, at my cost. I advised these transients not to return to the area. I am so disappointed and disgusted with the Clear Lake Police for not helping me in any way, not doing what was promised to me. Now, moving on to code enforcement. No help whatsoever, no callbacks, nothing. They are too busy writing tickets for weed abatement so they can make revenue. They should be assisting citizens to help clean up their neighborhoods. Case in point, the property on Woodland Drive, where the lady has two trailers parked on a city lot with 30 dogs and trash everywhere. Those poor neighbors have to deal with it because code enforcement won't. Now, moving on to North Bay Animal Services. They are doing a dismal job of honoring their contract with the city. Never a callback on any issue, never showing up when they say they will. Why aren't they picking up the dogs on Woodland? Why aren't they picking up the roaming packs of dog attacking people and animals? I had high hopes that Lieutenant Peterson's report would find the abuses North Bay is committing. But now I am convinced he will say they are doing better because the Police Department, who employs him, there is no way they want to take animal control back. I hope the City Council will step up and have the courage to make the right decisions. We need oversight and transparency. Our community deserves better, and we won't stop until change is made.
Thank you, Jean. The time is now open. That was the only request I had. If there's someone else who would like to speak to the City Council, please step forward. You need to turn it into the City Clerk.
You can still hand them to the City Clerk, ma'am.
Okay, well, let me get in here. My name's Kay Lopez. Is this on?
It is.
Okay. I've seen and heard a lot of complaints from people in Clear Lake where they can't get animal control to control the dogs that are biting them. And yesterday was another bite. And the person bitten was told that it's up to the owner to put the dog down. Well, this dog has apparently been attacking over and over and over again, and nobody's going outright in citations. And other incidences where RP's were threatened with arrest if they didn't take care of the dogs, I didn't find that in the penal code anywhere. So, my thought was, how well are these officers trained? Why aren't they making citations? Why aren't they writing citations for dogs at large? So I called the Certified Animal Control Officer Registry to see if they even had certificates. And every one of them don't have certificates. So I asked them, can you write a citation when you don't have a certificate? And they said, no. You can have the 832 PC, but you cannot write a citation without the certificates. And that's the top dog also. He doesn't show on the database as having a certificate. So you might want to check into that, because that could turn on you. So I was really wanting to talk about something else tonight, but when this came across, I thought, I better, I better look at this. So how do you serve the people of Clear Lake when you can't even write a citation? Your job in animal control is to control the animals and not have a little kid walk into school getting attacked by a vicious animal that's been out over and over. So, to me, that really needs to be addressed. But please, check out every animal control officer on here and see if they have the certificate. Are they on the database? California Certified Animal Control Officer Registry. John Moritz was the only one on there. No surprise to me. He was very professional. So if I have a few seconds, I would like to be able to bring up what I came here for. And one of them was the, the Lake County News, April 11th. Alan Flora had said that the kennels were covered with feces as a result of guardia. No, this is a result of neglect, right here. That's not guardia, that's neglect.
So ma'am, your time is up, but I think you've got some friends that may speak to that next. I would ask this for those here in the chambers. If, just for time expedience, if someone has covered a topic that you were going to speak about, you can come up to the mic and just say, "I echo what this person said." So, just to save time, because it looks like there's a number of people here that would like to speak. Anyway, thank you, Ms. Lopez. I appreciate your time.
I'll see you in two weeks.
See you in two weeks. Rita, who's next?
Okay. Three minutes. Does it start right here in the three minutes, you guys?
Well, if all three of you want to have the same three minutes, you can come up together.
Well, listen, okay, we were here a month ago, and we were gonna help this young lady that has 39 dogs. And we started, but we had no help from code enforcement. And I want you to see these pictures, so if somebody would hand them to them, please. Okay, so we already rescued 10, but we've got to get in there because there was 39 dogs. And I can't believe, in a city that we're supposed to be, all the things that everybody says is happening, we've got all these places that are a mess, and the place that these dogs are at is disgusting. She'll tell you. Go ahead, tell them what this is like.
Yes, it's really bad. I've seen it tonight. The dogs are, we went inside, and they, they're friendly dogs and stuff, but they need help. And the situation is out of hand. And she asked repeatedly, repeatedly for help. I was there. She asked North Bay, she called them three times. They were supposed to come and pick up dogs, and they never did. So guess what? Dogs had puppies, and it's out of control now. And she's asked for help. She doesn't need to be hurt or anything, but she needs help with this, you know? And somebody needs to come in and help, really does.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elaine. I'm a member of the Animal Coalition. And I've been reading the Hayden Act. And I'm assuming you have all read the Hayden Act, and it is the law in California. The issue I'm curious about is when an animal, the law says when an animal is hurt or injured and picked up, it must be taken to a vet to evaluate. And if the veterinarian decides that the animal is treatable and could be adoptable, then that veterinarian will do that. Her fees or his fees, they will make every effort to find the owner of the animal. But if the owner cannot be found, those fees are to be paid by the city or county where the animal was picked up from that city or county's licensing fees. I'm wondering where those fees are going and if they're available for what the law says they need to be used for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any left time? I'd like to know when somebody's gonna go out there and clean it, so we can go and help these animals. Because I don't know if they've showed you all the pictures, but this is not, this is not an excuse. I mean, we look like we live in a third world country. Go up and down some of these streets, and there's all this garbage. What's happened? It's going backwards instead of forward. They need to start taking care of this town. And I mean, there's decent people that live around this house, and they've said they've called. How many times did that poor man next door say? He said, "The poor dogs, they bark all night. They fight." I mean, this is, this is not right. This is not right. And if you go up Woodland and you see this, and you guys are worried about the tourists, what tourists would come up here? And that isn't the only place, because we drove around, and there's so many places that have so much garbage. And you know what? If they don't have the money and they own a house, put a lien on their home.
Thank you, Rita.
They need to start cleaning up. This is what the problem is. Three minutes.
Council, please step forward. Thank you for coming. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Hannah Phillips. I own a childcare home in the avenues. And I have, I am so, so afraid for not only my life, but the children that I care for and their parents and their family's life coming in and out of my program. I have a gate that is very, very high that thankfully dogs cannot jump over. But I have constant packs of dogs, single dogs that are just roaming, that I know for a fact animal control has gone and addressed these people, but nothing has been done. They're still running amok. They run the street, they run the neighborhood. I don't even walk anywhere in the avenues because I'm terrified. I am genuinely so scared for my life. A kid was just attacked, taken to the hospital a few blocks away from my home. A guy was mauled on my street and taken to the hospital by a pack, he was mauled by a pack of dogs. And I just feel like you guys, I feel like the city is just putting this to the side, to the side. I understand finances and stuff like that is not, you know, just out of nowhere. But this is a life and like a threat, a threat to our safety and more important than, in my opinion, alligator roads and whatnot. Thank you for hearing me.
Please. Thank you. Can you introduce yourself?
My name is Rex Clayder. Been up here to pay in taxes since 85. I have properties up on the avenues on 28th Street and Wilkinson. I'm complaining, and I have pictures and whatever I turned in to the city about the roads and the condition. My friend here, I got applause when I went out there and took measurements of the road on 40th and M-O-L-L, Road, Street. Anyway, it's in front of the Caltrans, but I understand there's a standoff between the city and Caltrans. But to repair that road, it cannot be patched. It's been patched for 10 years, and it continues to get worse and worse. The cars and everybody, it's a safety hazard. I also, too, talking about safety hazards, 32nd Street and Boyle Street, that potholes as big as your tires. Those need to be addressed. I don't know why. I was told in, when they did Phillips and Gardner and 18th, that that particular time, they had a million dollars just to deliver the equipment. Why didn't they go ahead and do Boyle's and 32nd Street and continue down 18th Street? I have no idea. It's a waste of money. Two, this, the slurry on the roads, that was a godsend last year. But this morning, I got up, they come out, and they got, the water company is digging up the road to fix a water leak, so that all that slurry's gone and whatever, and there's gonna be a pothole. And I've been complaining for 30 years about lakes and 28th Street and potholes. I've been fortunate enough to have, or unfortunate enough to have medical ambulances out to my house two or three times. And to get out of there, if you're inside one of those things, you're gonna bounce out of your chairs. Point that I'm going with that is, it's a safety issue. I have even pictures of police officers going through my six-foot fence and tearing down 50 feet of it for the fact that they lost control of their vehicles and went through it. Officer Hobbs, I complained about that, trying to get my insurance to cover it. And he stuck his belly button in my nose and says, and looked over me and says, hey, what are you gonna do about it? I backed off, and I said, "I just want to report that it was a..." I can turn it into my insurance, but that never happened. I was down here four to five times, and it was, the officers were chasing a couple of kids on foot. And they were going way too fast. Officer Hobbs and silly, skilly. So a point that I'm going with these, these roads are what we rely on. We need to have them repaired.
Thank you, sir.
I understand what was said. It's way over our heads and budgeted. But I mean, at one time...
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You bet. Is there Hannah Phillips? Did you get a chance to speak? Okay. And Heather Monday? And Elaine Summitt? Oh? Okay. Just don't want to miss anybody.
Hi, my name is Heather Monday, and I just wanted to add my two cents in about the animal control, dogs at large situation. I mean, on my street alone, there's just half a dozen dogs.
Which street is that, ma'am?
West 40th Street. There's half a dozen dogs that are routinely going through my yard, running up and down the street. They're not neutered. They're not, some of them have yards, but they're not kept in them. They're just, I have not walked my small dogs in 10 years because they get attacked. I only walk my shepherds in groups with other people who also have large dogs because it's too dangerous. You just cannot do it.
Thank you for your time. Those were all the slips that I had. Is there anyone else who didn't turn in a slip but liked to speak? Please come up.
My name is Suzie Heidbrecht, and I'm a volunteer at the shelter. I'm the cat lady. Haven't been down there lately because they don't have cats. But I wanted to back up what Kay was gonna bring up as far as the condition of the cages that these poor dogs are kept in. I'm not gonna blame the girls because they work their butt off. But the cages are filthy, they're crammed in there, and they have way too many dogs. They are just overwhelmed. And I happen to have walked Roman, the one that was in here today, who's an absentee. And I happen to have walked Roman, the one that was in here today, who's an absolute sweetheart. They, they try their best, but they're not getting any support from Petaluma. And if you call Petaluma to complain, they are rude, they insult you, and you never do get a callback. So I just wanted to back what Kay was saying. Thank you.
Rita, we, we heard, but, um, is there someone else who can speak to that that hasn't spoken? I have a hand in the back. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. Um, I just have a few different.
If you could just introduce yourself and where you live.
Margaret Garcia, I live here in Clear Lake, around, right down the block on Yule Avenue. Um, I have a couple of things I wanted to ask about or comment about. Um, and I guess first off, um, this M C E, um, presentation, super informative, really good information. And I'm wondering, who is M C E? Can you tell me that real quick? Like, are they, uh? National?
Do you like me to answer that?
Please.
Yeah, it's just an engineering firm that was hired by the Lake County's Regional Transportation Planning Authority on behalf of the county and the two cities.
Consulting.
To do this report, yeah.
Good, good information. I'm wondering, do you guys have anyone doing that or can do that for new roads that need to come in or, or an analysis of the city's need and what areas need new roads? That would be something that would also be a help.
Our Public Works Department does that, ma'am.
They do? Okay. Regarding public works, I, I, your information on the upcoming projects, you referred to the avenues project as an area between Highway Fifty-three and Old Highway Fifty-three. And I'm not sure how that, uh, uh, classifies as the avenues. Maybe you could give me more information, clarify. I think that's how you referred to the avenues project.
I think she was referring to two separate areas.
Correct.
Well, okay, what is the avenues project then? You're, you?
Go ahead.
The avenues project is the area that is east of State Highway Fifty-three?
Okay, so between Fifty-three and Old Highway Fifty-three?
No. E- East of State Fifty-three.
Okay, so above the road?
Above.
Okay, so that would be the, the avenues. Okay, I, that's, it's good clarification. Um, the other thing is I know the touristi, tourism is a big, uh, deal here in Clear Lake. And the water, the lake is great, looking beautiful. Um, I'm wondering, when was the last time, I'm sure it's not been that long ago, that a water test has been done? Like, if you were to go and test the water, what would it show? And I just wanna say that when I was a kid, and we used to be up here, we used to be at Red Bud in Austin and in and out of the water on the beach. That activity no longer exists and it's a shame. And now across the lake, Lucerne, that area, you see people getting into the water on the beach area. So I'm curious, what would a water test show in this area? And is it safe for families and children? Cause I have my family reunion coming up and they're asking me, hey, how's the lake? But the important part is not how it looks, but how is the water? Because not everyone has a boat to go out into, uh, the middle of the lake to, to, uh, enjoy the lake.
Again, ma'am, we can't answer questions?
Okay, alright, so then that's.
But thank you for asking them.
Good. And then regarding Norcal and the animal shelter, I'm concerned about that.
Your time's up.
Let me just comment, give me a minute, just one more minute. Is that the fact that I went by there this afternoon? You wanna hear what I have to say? The cages were.
Come back next meeting. Your time's up.
Seriously?
Seriously, thank you very much.
The cages were in great shape, clean. I don't know if it's been really cleaned up in the recent, but today they look great. The animals, of course, they're barking.
Thank you.
But things look clean.
Thank you.
And that, and I also got an application to volunteer.
Ma'am, please, your time, your time is up.
So I'm gonna be volunteering down there to walk the dogs and whatever else needs to be done.
Thank you.
So you'll see me next week, cause I, or week after, I'm sure I've got more stuff that, uh, I'll talk to you guys about. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Did you guys even look at the picture? Oh, yeah. Yes, we did. And it's, I moved it over to him.
Alright. Moving on to item G, the consent agenda. Any member of the council wish to pull an item? May have a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
A motion by Councilmember Sloten and a second by Councilmember Kramer.
You should ask if there's any public comment?
No.
Any com, public comment on the consent agenda? Thank you, Mr. Flora.
I did wanna point out one small clerical error. Um, item number ten, there's a couple conflicting, uh, references to a resolution number. The correct number should be twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-three.
Okay.
Wait a second, there are two. Oh, twenty, okay, I see it.
So with the recognized correction on the consent agenda, item number ten, um, would you like to reformat your?
I, I moved and we approved the revised consent agenda as suggested by our city manager.
And again, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for the revised consent agenda adoption. All those in favor signify by saying aye and opposed by nay. Aye.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council with Councilmember Overton absent.
Moving on to item H eleven, new business, award of contract for Eighteenth Avenue Improvement Project. Mr. Flora.
Uh, Director Leva is gonna handle this one.
Awesome. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. And we're here tonight to bring back and ask the council to approve a contract with Argonaut Constructors for the Eighteenth Avenue Improvement Project. Back in January, the project was, uh, put out to bid. Uh, the city opened bids on March sixteenth and Argonaut Constructors was the lowest responsible bidder. The project was previously awarded on April sixth, but the action was later resinded due to a delay from the funding source. Staff is here tonight to re-present a request for approval of the contract with Argonaut Constructors for an amount of four million, six hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Anyone from the public have questions regarding this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, there's a hand raised on the Zoom.
Oh, thank you. Comment from?
Go ahead, Lauren Bernadette.
Thank you. And good evening, council members. Can you all hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Good evening. My name is Lauren Bernadette and I'm an attorney with the law firm Chronic Moskowitz, Tiedemann and Gerard, speaking here today on behalf of the Coin Nation of Northern California. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this item tonight. The Coin Nation sent a letter to city council on May sixteenth detailing our concerns with the council's approval of this contract. And I would like to highlight the three requests that we made in that letter regarding SEQA, the Brown Act, and the Public Records Act. First, we're concerned that the city is moving forward with this project despite the pending SEQA action that the Coin Nation filed. As you know, the city could face significant costs and remediation work if the tribe prevails in the SEQA litigation after the city has already commenced construction. Under SEQA, proceeding with a project when a SEQA lawsuit is pending is at the applicant's own risk prior to a final decision in the lawsuit. Second, we're concerned that the city council took official action to rescind the previous project contract at its April twentieth meeting, even though the matter was not properly placed on its meeting agenda. The Brown Act requires that all action items be properly listed in advance on the applicable meeting agenda and no action may be undertaken on any item that's not appearing on the posted agenda. The item was not properly before the city as an emergency item, as it was presented, and it would not have properly been a matter requiring immediate action. So the matter was not properly on the council's agenda and by acting on it, the council violated the Brown Act. The city appears to be compounding this error by adopting a new project contract at this meeting, even though the prior project contract was not properly rescinded. Because the contract rescission was not properly listed on the previous meeting agenda, the Coin Nation requests that the city promptly take all necessary steps to cure or correct this action that was taken in violation of the Brown Act. We also request that you please notify the tribe of the curative, corrective, or other action that you intend to take regarding this matter. Third, our letter included a Public Records Act request for certain categories of documents related to the project. The tribe requests that the city promptly provide the requested public records. Again, these three requests are detailed in the letter that the Coin Nation sent to the city on May sixteenth, so please take time to see that letter and please be in touch with us regarding any questions that you have regarding our requests. Thank you for the, your time this evening.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Flora, do you or our city attorney want to address those, uh, assertions?
Well, I, I can, I can start and then if Mr. Jones wants to jump in. So on the first item, um, actually, you know, state law requires that lead agencies and responsible agencies, once the council took action as the lead agency, um, in this case, normally it'd be the planning commission, but that the, um, it's regardless of, um, any, uh, attempted litigation, the M and D or environmental review is presumed to comply with SEQA, um, unless there's some action by the court. So, you know, I, I'm not sure where that, you know, I think this is more of a, um, perhaps an emotional argument that whether the city should be moving forward unless the, the lawsuit is, um, resolved. But under the law, that's not what it says. Uh, the second part, um, you know, I think the council's aware that you have the latitude to, um, add an item to the agenda based on, um, certain requirements. Uh, what came up last time was basically, um, timing. This is not uncommon that, um, after an agenda's posted, if new information comes up, there can be a change made. Um, in this case, this was a recension, um, of a previous action. And so, you know, if there was some concern about curing that action, uh, by voting on this item now tonight, you've cured the recension. So, um, not, not really quite, um, uh, understanding that argument. But, um, and then the final, the Public Records Act request, of course, uh, we received the request and, uh, we will comply with providing the documents, um, as required under the law.
Thank you, Mr. Flora. Mr. Jones, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think, um, the city manager did, did cover a lot of those things. I think when it comes to the litigation, the council was served with that. But they're, they're aware of that, um, pending matter out there and, and whatever risks may be a part of that. But as the city manager, she commented, there, there has not been a, a court order or anything indicating that, um, we're, we have to stop or, or need to stop. So the council's certainly within its discretion to award the contract and, and we can see where it goes from there. And with regard to the item here, there isn't an issue, this, this item tonight has been properly agendized. I think you are, i- if there was an issue, I don't think there was. The, the item tonight is curing that, um, by, by having this, uh, agendized. If it was awarding a contract before, that would be even more problematic. Really, the rescission of a contract is probably something that could have been administratively done at the staff level. Our municipal code says that we, the council has to award contracts. It doesn't say anything about rescission. We just stopped bringing it to the council because it was a, 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 a last-minute thing that had come on after the agenda was posted, that we would walk it on to the agenda, which we are allowed to do if there's a supermajority vote, which there was, it was a unanimous five-o vote to, to add it. Um, that this item had come up after the agenda was posted and we needed, it was of, of urgent matter that needed to be done at that time. So, uh, that, I, I think we were within our rights to do it then, but certainly what's happening tonight by being posted, anybody can comment tonight, to actually award the contract, um, is, is curing that issue. And with Public Records Act, obviously we'll comply. We have a great, great city clerk who's, who's on top of that and will make sure we get a response within the ten days that we're required to do. Happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone have questions of staff? Mr. Flora?
I might just add that, um, you know, this, um, this process happened, uh, because of, uh, five hundred thousand of funding provided, uh, by the California Transportation Commission. This is the self-help allocation that we're eligible for. You know, so the, the hearing by the Transportation Commission was yesterday and today where they, you know, had a number of items before them. Um, this was one of them. Uh, they did, uh, approve the allocation. That's why we're ready to bring this back. And, you know, I would just say there was, um, certainly an effort, uh, by the Coin Nation to, um, you know, request that the item was pulled from the consent calendar, um, at their request and they asked that it be postponed. CTC staff, as well as Caltrans staff, um, did ask us for additional information, reviewed the environmental documents, um, and were extremely comfortable moving forward with the work that the city did on this project. So I just wanted the council to know that.
Thank you, Mr. Flora. Any other comments, questions? Very well, I'm gonna close public comment and I'll bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Argonaut Constructors for the Eighteenth Avenue Improvement Project in the amount of four million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars and authorize the city manager to approve up to ten percent for additional unforeseen contract amendments.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kramer and a second by Councilmember Sloten. All those in favor signify by saying aye and vote electronically.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council and with Councilmember Overton absent.
This concludes our business for this evening and I'll take us to item I, city manager and council member reports. Mr. Flora?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a few things. So on, uh, May thirty-first, there is going to be a walking school bus. And this is, uh, something that came up, is sort of a partnership between Blue Zones and Conacta Unified School District. And so, um, it's, it's intended to bring awareness to, um, I guess, the benefits of walking to school and various things. But, um, so the city's been coordinating with the school district and Blue Zones to, um, help accommodate this. There's gonna be a very temporary road closure here on Lake Shore Drive. They're going to ask all the students, um, from Pomos School to gather at Austin Park and then walk up to Pomos School. And, um, folks such as yourself, other community members, the teachers are all encouraged to, to join in that. So it'll be a fairly short event. We're going to just be closing, um, the Eastern Lane, um, for that and barricading that off and whatnot. So, um, I'm sure that they'll be putting some information out about that. Um, it's been, it was kind of a last minute idea that came up, but, um, Director Leva and Chief Hobbs have been working closely with him to make sure that it's a, a, uh, safe event.
Once again, if you could share the date and time?
Uh, it is May thirty-first, that's, uh, Wed- Wednesday. And I believe they're starting around eight o'clock at the park. I don't know if you have.
Seven, seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty to eight-thirty, okay.
Thank you very much.
You're aware that we, uh, received, um, some funding from the Clean California Grant Program, um, which we're still have been working through getting that money out and, um, but we had a sort of last-minute request to apply for the second round, which, um, was extended to the end of this month. And so we're, um, we've decided to put together a couple of projects, um, for that. So there's gonna be kind of a continuation of our partnership with Pop Clear Lake and some of the art projects they've been doing, as well as, um, the, uh, sort of trash-related things, the free dump days and, and that sort of stuff. So that's gonna be, what they're currently doing will be extended. Um, and then we're, I believe, going to, um, apply for funding through that program for beautification effort along Lake Shore Drive. And so we're hoping to apply for close to five million, which is the max, um, which won't get. which won't get everything done there, but, you know, it would be a big chunk. We just received a memo today on our public local housing allocation funding finally got approved. So we'll be able to start getting those funds out consistent with the plan that the council adopted several months back. Still waiting to hear on the infrastructure info grant that we applied for, on whether that was successful. I didn't realize this was a thing, but I asked for an update the other day, and they said we are in the cone of silence while they're reviewing applications. So I didn't realize HCD had a cone of silence, but apparently they do. So we'll wait and see when that's lifted. One of members of the public mentioned water quality, and there are regular testing events that happen. I think it's mainly just through the summer season that are done weekly or every other week, primarily conducted by some of the tribes, but that information is shared with the county. But the aeration system across on Austin Beach is complete at this point. You can see the yellow curtains out there, and you can't really see the aeration system working that much, but it is operating. And so, you know, we'll see as the summer moves along, but we expect that area of the lake to be swimmable all year. The splash pad is ready to be operational starting next weekend for the Memorial Day holiday. We're also expecting our kayak rental kiosk to be delivered next week and to be available for rentals for next weekend, and that will be over at Austin Beach. I mentioned this previously, but just wanted to share a little bit more details. Our Clear Lake Police Department will be providing some assistance to the city of Lakeport starting next week. I think they've asked for coverage for some shifts on the weekend for about five weeks at this time, so we'll be helping them out again. You're aware that the Elam Tribe has been working on a project to develop a travel center in the city, Lake Shore Drive near Red Bud Park. Received a letter notifying us that the Bureau of Indian Affairs has approved the environmental document on that project. You may recall that it was released over a year ago. The city provided a number of comments and concerns with that project. They made a decision based on those comments and some other comments from the county to redo the environmental document. That happened unfortunately. Even though it was specifically requested, BIA did not provide us any opportunity to review the revised document. It was actually provided to us by the tribe. So we may be bringing an item forward to have the council submit a letter, go ahead and submit a letter to the BIA about this. I would say that this isn't a critique of the tribe. We actually have been working with them quite well, and have had a number of meetings about concerns, and are going to continue to do that. But I still believe that the process that BIA is undertaking doesn't seem fair to us as a jurisdiction or the community. So more to come on that. And then we've talked about sort of the recycling container situation a number of times. We are making some progress on some solutions there. Had a meeting with County Public Services Director and our waste hauler earlier this week, and I think we have the plans kind of sketched out to get a solution coming here relatively soon. And we've gotten a second round of letters that are grocery stores and others threatening penalties and so forth that just came out this week. So I've already been talking to them about that and updating them. But more to come when the details are followed, you know, are firmed up. But we'll be submitting an application for initially a mobile center here in the area. The state isn't accepting any more of these, what they call pilot projects for these mobile centers. But we have agreement from Mendocino County and the city of Fort Bragg, who had an application in, or they're allowed to amend their application to allow us to participate with them. So appreciate that. With that, it's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Flora. Mr. Sloten?
I attended the public service appreciation thing. That was a great success, great success. Just one comment. I think Councilman Kramer needs to improve his cornhole expertise at the next one. Because it was fun, and it, a lot of people attended. It was a great thing. Also, I attended a LAFCO meeting yesterday, similar kind of things. We talked about the Lower Lake Water District and their MSR. There's some coming up for MSRs for fire flows throughout the whole county, apparently. So we're working on that. And our LAFCO, I'm not sure what his title really is, but John Benau, who's been doing this forever, did say that he wants to retire at some point in the future, sooner than later. So we'll see how that works out. So we might have to find a new LAFCO person to help us out. That's it.
Thank you for that report. Well, my understanding was you used to be a pretty correct pitcher there. What happened? Mr. Kramer, do you have a report to share?
This is underhand, number one. It's the first time I'd ever done it, number two. These are my excuses. And he truly kicked my butt.
Sad day for a Lower Lake High School graduate.
It was a sad day for underhanded pitching. I would challenge him 30 or 40 years ago to, you know, baseball.
By the way, you know, I did play baseball in the Netherlands. And I competed in a national championship for under 16, so don't count me out yet.
There you go.
I think I could still give you a run for your money. Anyhow, we'll never know. It was a great event. It went over very well. The weather was actually fairly kind to us. It wasn't overly hot. And the folks in our Public Works and police and administration that got, were recognized for their good work, I think was well-deserved. So I was really pleased with it. Good going. As far as meetings, earlier this week, our RRA meeting, Risk Reduction Authority Meeting, was actually canceled for lack of a quorum. Last week, I did attend the APC meeting. I'll let-
No, go ahead.
No, I don't. I'll let you handle that one. I'm going to go to the clerk meeting that I also attended, because I think it's something that, one of the things that came out of it was something that will be beneficial to the city of Clear Lake. They're starting a program of chipping right now. I think they're in the Oaks and Glen Haven Lucerne area. However, Clear Lake is also on the schedule to have chipping services offered. There'll have to be a fill-out-a-form call, a number which will be available or send the email application in. And they'll come out to private property owners and chip their, any brush that they have around. So hopefully that'll happen in the next couple of months. But I thought that would be a great program funded by grants that clerk has been able to get. This Saturday, as an announcement, might as well hit it here, too. We have our semi-annual Lower Lake Cemetery Cleanup Day. I would ask that any of you that have a few hours Saturday morning between 8:00 and 12:00 to come down, bring your weed eater, blower, rake, or gloves, or show up and if we can help to make our cemetery cleaner for, in advance of Memorial Day weekend and the Avenue of the Flags event. That'll be great. It's a community event, and I would love to see some or most of you there. And that, of course, leads into Memorial Day weekend and the Lower Lake Days Parade and the Street Fair, which hopefully we have over, I think, 70 vendors at this point, and our parade list is growing. I want to thank Chief Hobbs for offering his help with traffic control and also for entering, making several entries. I think the police command car, and I think Lieutenant Ryan Peterson is going to be on a bike. And Elvis, I think, yeah, is also going to be on a bike. So I'd love to see all of you come out and enjoy Lower Lake Days on May 28th, Sunday. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last night, I had the pleasure of going to the KEC Senior Awards Night. Wonderful young folks we have in the community off to hopefully do some big, great things. I learned that there are two valedictorians this year, and one's not a consolation prize. We have three juniors that have earned college, enough college credits to graduate early. And these juniors have exceptional GPAs, so they're awarding two valedictorian slots, one for the seniors, one for the juniors this year. I'll be heading to Lower Lake next week to do something similar there. All thanks to Rotary and the work that we're doing. I also had the pleasure of attending the PEG meeting last week. The town hall equipment package that we've been putting together so that PEG can go out to all the different town hall meetings in Lake County was tested out at our PEG meeting, worked wonderfully. And we also had a presentation from Pop Clear Lake. The hope is that we can supply them with some tools to offer some multimedia programs for students. So looking forward to seeing how that develops.
Great report, gentlemen. As Councilmember Kramer reported, I did attend the Lake APC and Transit. I want to report that the buses are still running. Ridership is still down to post because of COVID. But if you need a ride, Lake Transit is there. If you are needing to get to a medical appointment or other necessary things, you can contact Mr. Kramer.
Lake Links?
Lake Links?
Yes, Lake Links, and that's, they have either a website. I can't remember the phone number yet at this moment, but you can-
But it is online. You can check the phone-
It's online. You can look it up.
So there are rides for that. The Lake Area Planning Council, we're excited that the new highway widening project between Kits Corner and Highway 175 Cobb is pretty much open. I believe there will be a ribbon cutting. I don't know the date off the top of my head. Sadly, we're going to lose Gary, the manager for Lake Transit. He has resigned. I think he'll attend one more meeting prior to his resignation taking effect. But he's been here a couple of years. He's done a fantastic job leading that team. So he will be missed. Sadly, he's decided, I think, he wants to try a political, to get a political position, and he might be running for the Board of Supes in Plumas County. I think he'd be a good addition.
Mr. Mayor, that phone number for Lake Links is 707-995-3330.
Okay, again, also online if you need a ride, and that's a great opportunity.
And that's lakelinks.org.
Lakelinks.org, thank you, sir. On a sad note, a person who was very involved with Lake Transit, a pastor in our community, lived on Cobb, a real strong force, and a hero, in my opinion, during the Valley Fire. Carl Parker passed, so our sympathies are with his family. And we had a moment of silence for Carl at our meeting in recognition of the contributions he made. And with that, that concludes my report. We'll open it up now for any future agenda items to the council. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Seeing none, we will close this portion of the meeting and adjourn to closed session in five minutes.